Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. February twentieth, for the selectmen's meeting. I'm sitting in as acting, as a vice chair. Chairman Lombard is not feeling well tonight. Hope he's feeling better. Think he wanted to throw me in the hot seat right off the bat, but that's okay. Let me see, I'm a little just convulsing. Start with a pledge of allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, in equal liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Opening comments?
Josh?
Quick remark following up on a motion we voted on a couple of weeks ago. Actually, we made the motion on January thirtieth, and that was a request to Northeastern to notify us five days in advance of any significant operations up there. And in short, Northeastern has denied that request. So we presumably will not be getting that notice. That's all.
Thanks, Josh. That's unfortunate. Okay, I have no comments at this point. Want to mention that the Charles Kelly Scholarship, we're accepting essays. They're due by April first. This is for the annual scholarship, civic scholarship. How long is the essay for, Tony? Does it, any requirements?
We, we announced the winner, so it's right here. So the scholarship is for a thousand dollars. It's a short essay on what community service means to you. We ask that you don't put your name on it, so it's, so we, there's no bias as we evaluate the essays. And it's a, the eligibility is for any Nahat resident who has been accepted to a two or four-year accredited college is eligible for the scholarship. And that's it. We'll announce the winner at the annual town meeting.
Great. Okay, new business.
There's a, there's a birding trip hosted by Linda Pivacek. She's our local birding expert enthusiast. And I'll make a motion on that. I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the event request from the Arlington Bird Club, ask birders to host a birding trip on February twenty ninth from nine AM to eleven AM at Lodge Park on East Point.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ocean View, prop-. Ocean View proposal for a seasonal tent on the existing outside event. So this is something we're going to postpone, I believe. Ocean View wants to put a tent up over there, over the area where they hold outdoor weddings. But they have other permitting they have to go through first. They have to go through the Conservation Commission and the Building Inspector. So why don't we wait until we see what happens with that permitting before we...
They went through Hong Kong last night, in fact. They got their permissions for that. Just so people know, this is a tent that would be in position, as I understand it, from third week in March to around middle of May, and then third week or so in October until the first week in January. And as Mark mentioned, it's over the patio that was added a couple of years ago. And we'll take that up. Later date.
Yeah, just as part of the lease, it requires that landlords, the Board of Selectmen approval for any changes to the exterior. So as you mentioned, wait until the permitting process is through to take that up.
And just for people at home that may not understand, the Ocean View, the structure itself is actually on-town property. So the town is the landlord for that structure. We don't own the structure, we own the property underneath it. They have a long-term lease that requires any additions or improvements, requires the approval of the landlord, which is the Board of Selectmen.
Let's see, third one.
Okay. Two C. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's budget sent to the Finance Committee. Tony, want to give us an overview? Should we open the warrant first for this, or...
I have that under ongoing.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you are a couple pieces of information. The first is our estimated revenues. The second is our appropriations summary. And the third is detail, you know, further detail on those appropriations. This is a balanced budget at this time. What we'll be doing tonight is sending it officially to the FinCom so they can begin their process. The board has the ability to make changes after this, after tonight. Of course, prior to final acceptance by the FinCom. But we continue to work with them through the next step of the process. This budget is, we estimate the revenues this year at about thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Our estimated appropriations are fourteen million, four hundred and thirteen dollars, seven hundred and twenty, four hundred and thirteen, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Using, we balance that with overlay surplus of sixty and free cash of six hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. The headline of this budget that we put together is that it follows the commitment that the town made last year when proposing a two-and-a-half percent override. That commitment was to use the six hundred thousand dollar override to try to begin to get the town off of reliance on free cash spending. So if folks remember, we talk about free cash. It's essentially bonus money that comes in at the end of the year based on two fiscal years prior that was either underestimated as revenues, or we didn't spend as much as we had appropriated. So Department of Local Services, Divisional Local Services from the Department of Revenue suggests, highly recommends that you don't balance your operating budget with free cash because that amount changes year to year. Two years ago, the town balanced their budget with one point two million dollars of free cash. We used all of it. Last year, we balanced it with seven hundred and fifty thousand, all of our free cash. And this year, our free cash amount was six hundred and twenty-one thousand. So we're seeing a trend of our free cash going, decreasing year to year. So this year, our budget, our budget, so what DLS recommends is that when you do use your free cash to balance your budget, you use it for one-time expenses or reserves. And that's what we've done this year. We use about, we balance this budget with all of our free cash, but half, half of that is actually gonna, I apologize, six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of free cash. Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of that is gonna drop to free cash to help build that reserve going forward. The remaining amount of that is being used to balance the budget and for reserves and one-time expenses, mostly reserves. So once again, this year, we'll be putting a hundred thousand dollars into stabilization, twenty-five thousand into OPEB. We'll be putting fifty thousand dollars into a buyback program for retiring employees for unused sick and vacation time. So the highlight here is that we're staying committed to our goal of becoming less reliant on free cash. We only needed about half of our free cash this year to balance our budget. And the, and the half that we used was for one-time expenses and building our reserves. So that's the good news. It wasn't without, it was a difficult task to achieve that. You know, many of our departments requested more for their, for their departments and, you know, for services and uses that they believe they need to, you know, execute their goals as best as possible. But, you know, trying to get the town onto a, building up those reserves and being less reliant on free cash is the goal that we put forward when we, when the town voted in the override last year. So it's good news where we are right now. Couple other highlights that I'll say, some, some new things we put in here. Like I said, the building up our vacation sick time buyback, which is a liability on the town as our workforce gets older and closer to retirement. We also created a new line item for grant matching. We put twenty-five thousand in that. So what happens is we have applied for grants from the state, whether it be municipal vulnerability preparedness or coastal zone management, that those applications ask for matching funds from the town. And when you're able to indicate in your application that you already have money appropriated for that purpose, you jump to the top of the list in competitiveness. What we found over the last year was when we applied for those grants, we really didn't have funds appropriated in the budget yet. So we had to commit to, you know, trying to go for money in the future budget. And we ended up losing a couple grant applications because of that, I think. So this is a really good, is a new way of thinking and allows us to be competitive with other communities when we go to apply. And many of those grants are four-to-one matches. So twenty-five thousand could turn into a hundred thousand. Do you have any questions on what I've presented so far?
Maybe a few. Let, let, let's look at the revenue for a second. I know we don't vote on revenue at town meeting, but it's always good to know where your revenues are coming from. So the revenue budget is based primarily on the assumption of a two-and-a-half percent increase, pretty much on the general fund items, not, not the enterprise fund items. And I see that that's pretty consistent on, on your budget. You said that you're placing, was it a hundred thousand dollars into the stabilization fund or the reserve fund?
Hundred thousand dollars into the stabilization fund.
Okay.
Last year, with the override, we, we did that as well. So prior to last year, we only had about ninety thousand dollars in that fund, and it's about ten years old. So with that override last year, we doubled it. And now this year, we're putting another hundred. And the commitment from the town, or from, from me as town administrator through, through you, the Board of Selectmen, is to, to build those reserves up. It'll help protect our bond rating going forward for future borrowings.
Okay. So the stabilization fund is a fund that, that is set aside that can only be used for capital items, I believe, right? I mean, it has to be voted at a town meeting with a two-thirds vote. So it's, you know, once you put money in there, it's, it's tough to get it out.
Exactly.
Which is probably a good thing. And I think you've, I've heard in some earlier meetings, you mentioned, I'm looking at some of the enterprise fund revenues in water and sewer. I see a, you know, let's see, sewer charges, and that's because of the, um, the cost for wastewater treatment in Lynn is going up?
Yes. So separate from your, exactly. So while we go through this budget, we're thinking about the rate, you know, the taxpayer and in, as, not just their property taxes, but their rate-paying bills as well, like water, sewer, and rubbish. It's knowing, last year, we hit, got hit with unexpected increases in sewer because of Garelec Farms coming offline and the way that the contract reads and the formula works. Our percentage of the total went up drastically. Garelec Farms is actually the biggest user of wastewater out of the entire system between us, Swamp Scott, Saugus, and Lynn. So when they came offline, all communities' assessment increased unexpectedly and pretty significantly. So we, we see a pretty, a pretty big increase this year in sewer. Our, our combined water sewer rate this year will see an increase of four-and-a-half percent. We're, we're actually gonna see a decrease in our water rate from nine dollars and one cents to eight dollars and sixty-five cents. But our increase is in our sewer rate, nine dollars and ninety-four cents last year to eleven dollars and nineteen cents. In FY nineteen, our combined water sewer rate increased nine point eight seven percent. In FY twenty, it increased six point five one percent. And this year, it increases four point five two percent. So what we're really working hard on is trying to suppress the, the increase or the, you know, the feeling that, the, the impact that our ratepayers see from that, from that increase on the assessment. So doing other things in the enterprise funds to try to counter those, those increases. Given the, given the increase from, from sewer, we, I think we did a fairly good job at this point. Rubbish right now is, we're, as you know, as I've talked about it a couple Board of Selectmen meetings, we're still negotiating with Waste Management for the next contract. What we've put in here is the highest rate that we would be able to see, we think that we'll see. But we have time between now and when these books go to print that we can adjust that as we negotiate with Waste Management. So, you know, we, we know that through debt shift in the past, because, because of sewer breaks and the override, that, you know, folks here in Nahat are, are feeling the burden of, of increased bills between taxes and their enterprise or their utilities bills. So we're trying to do our best to, to suppress that.
And the, the increase in the transfer in for the debt, debt shift is basically from the borrowing we did?
Exactly, yeah. And we have, we have an additional large borrowing coming up this year as well.
Yeah, okay.
You know, our water, our water rate went up pretty significantly as well because of leaks that we had in town over the past couple of years. Our assessment is based off of past usage. But we have MWRA and their leak detection crew coming into town this spring and working with us. We were the, we, out of the just water users in their system, we were the highest percentage increase on the rate out of all communities. So we, you know, by bringing them in and working hand-in-hand with MWRA to find our leaks and get those fixed. And MWRA offers us zero percent interest loans, which we have that in the, I'll get into that in the warrant as well, to try to solve those problems so that we can control the usage and lower our rates going forward.
Okay. Great. One last question on the appropriation side. You are currently negotiating contracts?
Yes. We're currently, uh, union contract negotiations, yes. So what we have here is a, factored in for the appropriations is a two percent increase, just like we did last year's budget. As I said, you know, the, the numbers here really need to be finalized by mid-April. So we hope to be able to come to some type of negotiation, negotiated contract before then so that we can really nail down these numbers.
One last question, I guess. Has the school submitted their budget yet?
They have. They have, and that's, that's reflected in the, in your summary. This, the, the school certainly saw a, a, a pretty significant increase this year due to special education costs that were unforeseen. But we have, you know, between the school committee and the superintendent, they did a really good job of, you know, sharpening their pencils and, and, you know, they understood that the challenge and the goals of the town's finances on the whole and how, you know, we're trying to get off of free cash. So they really went to work and sharpened their pencils and came with a budget that we're able to take on and still maintain, you know, the town's financial goals.
Well, that's certainly great to hear that your relationship with the schools is going well, vice versa. So I'm glad to hear that. I didn't always have that luxury when I sat in your position, but it's good that you're working well together and, and ironing things out, so.
I'll, one other highlight too in this is something that we talked about last year is a negotiation between Swamp Scott for Human Resources Services. They have, uh, two-and-a-half FTEs in their Human Resource Department. We were, we've been communicating with them about purchasing their services for the town in Nahat, which is, you know, eternally beneficial to, to us. They have a full-time, very experienced Human Resources Director and Assistant and a full-time Benefits Coordinator. So in this budget, I have funds appropriated for that purpose, which is something that the town, you know, desperately, I think, needs is to have some professional experience in that area.
Josh?
Yeah, well, I'm pleased that we're gonna be able to get this budget to the FinCom to give them plenty of time to work it over before town meeting. So thanks for all the work that you and Debbie have done and everybody else. I understand, you know, we'll still be able to tweak it a little bit in the, in the coming weeks. But I also think it's really important that, you know, we're stuck to the plan that we laid out to the citizens prior to, you know, while we were asking for the override. So I know it didn't come without some pain in some areas, but it's very important that we meet our commitment to, to the voters that pass the override, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll be honest. When we, when we went through that override and for the goals that I laid out, it was, it was unexpected to be able to make these types of changes the very next year. We, I kind, I figured that it would be a slower turning of the, of the direction of the boat. But for the fact that we're able to, you know, balance our budget with only using half of our free cash, which is four to five hundred thousand dollars less than it was two years ago, and use that half for the proper expenses, that's, that's definitely, we're, we're definitely heading in the right direction.
And the stability fund, you know, helps with our bond rating, but it also reduces the amount of loans we have to take, right? Because we have that, those funds available. So it's sort of a double benefit.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. No, thanks, Tony. And as, as Josh said, we'll have another opportunity to to make changes as we go along, if necessary. All right, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to endorse the Town Administrator and Selectmen Budget for FY two thousand twenty-one and to forward it to the Finance and Advisory Committee for their ongoing review in the FY two thousand twenty-one budget development process.
Seconded.
Any discussion on motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Business D, clerk appointment. As you know, at our last meeting, was it our last meeting? That our town clerk, Peggy Burrell, had undecided to retire from the position. And the way our charter works, in an unexpired, in a, in a, a position that's filled, it can be voted on by the the remaining board members, if it is a board, and and the Board of Selectmen, seeing that really, there's no board here, we're talking about an individual. I think the the board voted last meeting to to take, to ask the, anyone in the public if they were interested in serving in that position as in the interim, to submit a a letter of interest and a copy of their resume. And I believe we have actually received three. And is it okay if I I identify them?
Absolutely.
Like, Lloyd Ballantyne, Diane Duffy, and Bobby Joe Blair. So I'm excited that we have some interest in some what seems to be very qualified individuals. I'm not quite sure what the process is going to be. Tony, you might want to talk about it?
Sure. First, I again want to thank the former clerk, well, not former yet, but our current clerk, Peggy Burrell, for all of her time served, and she's been helping through this process, making sure that we have a smooth transition and is willing to help out going forward and as well as train the newly elected clerk come April. All three of the folks that submitted interest in the interim role have have also pulled papers already, I believe, or have indicated that they will be, they intend to run for the seat in April. So with that, given that the three of them are gonna be running and given that we have a presidential, we have early voting this week coming up, and then we have a presidential primary. It was mentioned at the last meeting, actually, that it may make sense to bring in an experienced town clerk from the outside that can help us get from now until then. And instead of providing any type of advantage to the three qualified candidates for the position, allow them to run, you know, equally in the upcoming election. So I've already reached out to the Secretary of State's office, I've reached out to neighboring communities, the Clerks Association, to see if there, you know, who might be available to help us. And again, you know, our current town clerk, Peggy, has been more than willing to help us through this transition, to make sure it's a smooth one. So my suggestion or recommendation to the board would be not to have a vote at this time and wish the three candidates luck in the upcoming election. And I will continue to search for a a experienced town clerk to help us get through from now until then.
Yeah, I agree with that. Given that there's only two months until the election, it is an elective position, obviously. And as you pointed out, appointing someone now, I think, would, you know, give them an advantage. So I think the fair thing to do really is is to, you know, let the election occur and do what we need to do to to bridge a gap for the next two months.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine putting the pressure on an individual by appointing someone interim and then learning the job and then also running for the position at the same time would probably be quite overwhelming. So I would agree entirely with your recommendation. All right.
The vote, then, all right?
Ongoing business, so we have to open the warrant. I move to open the annual town meeting warrant.
That's me, I guess. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the May sixteenth, two thousand twenty annual town meeting warrant, excuse me, for submission of the articles by all town boards, committees, personnel, and the public for consideration of placement onto the annual town meeting warrant.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Did you wanna, did you wanna say something?
Uh, I can, after you've.
Oh, we opened it?
Yep.
Aye? Aye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go through quickly some of the hi- highlight some of the articles that are in the warrant at this time. Different from years past, given that this year, our town meeting will not occur on the same date as town elections. Typically, the first article in the warrant would be to open the elections for the open positions. That will occur on April twenty-fifth, the last Saturday of April, and then the town meeting occurs on May sixteen. So that article you don't see here. Your first ten or so articles are all similar standard articles that you see every year. Article eleven, I'll highlight, is fifty thousand dollars for the compost area. Last year, we increased, I think, in years past, we had twenty thousand maybe going to this purpose. We increased it to fifty. We're, we're able to remove a ton of material out of the compost area and clean that up. There's still more work to do, so we're putting another fifty thousand into that, into that purpose and hope to clean it up even more. Well, as we mentioned earlier, Article fifteen is to put twenty-five thousand into OPEB, like we did last year. Again, last year, prior to town meeting and the override, we had about three thousand dollars in that account, and with the override, we put twenty-five thousand in. So we're doing, we're making that effort once again. This is a liability on the town, and by by funding that, it helps with our bond rating.
Can you give a fifteen second explanation of what OPEB is?
OPEB is, Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Essentially, what this is, is the cost of health insurance and other benefits of the like for retired employees. I think that was ten seconds.
Yeah, that was pretty good.
Article sixteen, stabilization, as we talked about again, putting a hundred thousand dollars into our stabilization fund. Article eighteen is authorization to borrow two hundred thousand dollars from the zero percent interest loan from MWRA to help with our water capital needs. Article twenty, this is a three hundred thousand dollar borrowing for Town Hall Capital for Enterprise Resource Planning Software. Essentially, what this is, is a finance or accounting program. Our current program that we have is, for lack of a better word, the cheapest option a town can potentially have. We were somewhat forced into it as our last software provider changed hands. We've had, you know, nothing but issues with this program, and what this allows us to do is manage our accounts, see how, you know, where we are throughout the fiscal year as far as expending our appropriations in each account, being able to provide reports and make sure that we are, that, you know, all appropriations are being accredited to the proper accounts. This is in line with the town's goals to increase our, our efficiency on the finance side, to do a better job of managing our finances. This, there's a number of different programs out there that we would be able to go out to bid, to select. I would argue this is, the, the, the cost of running one of these programs year to year is about the same of, as what we spend now, around seventy thousand dollars on an annual basis. But the upfront cost is, is, is not cheap. But this, by doing this borrowing, approving this article, and bringing in a new software for this purpose, will, will revolutionize how we, how we manage our finances in the, in the town. It will allow department heads to live access their accounts and and where they are in throughout the fiscal year. It'll help in budgeting, when we budget in future years, being able to see exactly, you know, where money's being spent on annual expenses or or one-time expenses. This is extremely important to, you know, meeting our goals in the future on the fin- finance side.
Yeah, I would agree, Tony. It's, it could make life a lot easier for everyone in the Town Hall. Have you considered using some of the free cash that we had to offset some of this rather than borrowing the whole thing?
Typically, of a, a size, you know, a cost this large, we will borrow, we have, rates are extremely good right now, and our bond rating is pretty good right now, so the current environment, it makes sense to borrow for it and pay it down over, over time. We considered it, but, you know, we're trying to, because our free cash continues to dip and dip and dip, we're trying to get that free cash to grow. So
Okay.
If you speak to, you know, our finance, our financial advi- we went, we spoke with our financial advisors that the town has and about all of our major capital expenses this year, and they really guide us on, you know, how we should pursue paying for those things. And their recommendation is to borrow for this.
What, what's the terms of the borrowing? How many years?
That I'll have to get back to you on.
Yeah, it's an expensive piece of software, but almost every time you and I have talked over the past year, you've been hammering how important, how important the software is, and certainly I've heard the same thing from our town accountant, so. Yeah, it seems like a, seems like a big sum of money, but you, you guys have convinced me that it's well spent.
Yeah, it, uh-huh, it's extremely important. I think it's gonna, like I said, it, it's gonna allow us to be so much better at managing our, you know, not that we do a poor job now, but the system is just, it takes so much time to work with that system that we have now. It's, it's really poor quality.
Seen some of the frustration on Debbie's part.
Yeah, yeah. The next Article twenty-one, another large borrowing article for us. This is a public safety issue. So our police department's communication tools, mobile communication tools are thirty-plus years old. We can't, we've had issues over the last year where our, our police on the road are not able to communicate with each other, sometimes one inside a house and one right outside on the road. And we, you know, it is, we do love our community, and we have a wonderful neighborhood here, but there are some, there are some intense situations that our police get involved in, and they have to be able to communicate with each other. We've tried every trick in the book to extend the life of our current system, and it just continues to fail, and it's even, parts aren't re- red- certain parts aren't even available to be purchased at this point anymore because it's so old. So this, this is a borrowing of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which will purchase new, you know, comes, it's radios, it's a repeater, it's antenna, it's the entire system that will serve us for potentially the next thirty years. It's a, it's a value borrow, borrowing article, and extremely valuable when it comes to the safety of our police, police officers on the road. Article twenty-two, this is another one that we've, we talked about at a form, Board of Selectmen meeting not too long ago. This is the borrowing for our sewer, forest main, and pump station, pump stations work. We have three point seven million dollars currently in, and what we need to do is borrow another four point six to cover the cost of repairing the sewer main from the rotary to Lynn Water Sewer and to make critical upgrades to our main pump station at Ward Road, as well as II issues, essentially infiltration and inundation. II issues are when you have cracked sewer pipes or folks have sump pumps or or drain pipes going into the sewer system. We, our, our volume of wastewater that we send to Lynn Water Sewer almost doubles, I think, when we have a, when we have a major storm event. So that's all clean stormwater that we are, you know, sending through the system, adding unnecessary wear and tear on the system, and paying to get treated.
Yeah, so we're paying by the gallon.
By the gallon. So, and then, of course, you know, we had three major sewer breaks over the last couple of years, one at one point two million dollars. It's undoubtedly needed that we have to fix. When Wright Pierce was here and spoke about our forest main, you understood the importance of that. The good news is, the town applied for the Sewer Rate Relief Fund last fall, and we were approved. So what we're doing now is, instead of borrowing this money just on our own bonding capacity, we actually can do it through the Sewer Rate Relief Fund, much like the MWRA's zero percent interest. These are two percent or or lower interest rates for long-term borrowing. And we're gonna be able to adjust that application, the scope of that a little bit. I've already spoke with DEP, they're on board, and be able to borrow this money through that fund. So this article that you have here will, will, the language on this will change. This is with Bond Council right now. There's certain language that you have to include in the, in the warrant article in order to, you know, that's required by the Sewer Rate Relief Fund.
So all four point six million will be through the Sewer Rate Relief Fund?
We, we were approved for four point oh nine million, but when I spoke with DEP, they advised me that they have additional capacity. They even said that if we needed to go up to six million, we could do so. But we're trying to stick to the, the critical needs at this point, given our, you know, financial situation in town, so.
Is this, can this be taken incrementally? In other words, take a portion of it when we do the Linway and another portion when we do the pump station, or?
I'll, I can't answer it a hundred percent confidently, but I know that he said, you know, when I spoke with DP, they said that there's, it has to be designed, whatever project we're using these funds for has to be designed by October, and then has to be, construction has to start by June of next year. So maybe, as long as we meet those.
The benefits of incremental would be pretty small.
But typically, Josh, what you could do is, had the town meeting authorized Board of Selectmen to borrow a sum of money, doesn't mean you have to borrow all of it. We could, we could borrow it incrementally if we chose, but we would seek town meeting approval for the authorization to borrow the full amount if needed. I think that's right, right?
Next Article twenty-three is DPW Capital. So along with the sewer, with our sewer infrastructure needs, our, our sewer equipment that we use to manage our sewer infrastructure. Our towable sewer jetter, I think we probably purchased in your early years as town administrator, Mr. Chairman?
I think the one you're using was donated by Goodie's and Sons.
It is, um, we've, we've had some close calls. Obviously, when we have, when residents call that their sewer line is backed up, we disperse this towable jetter to come and clear the line. And we've had some close calls already in the past where it's not operating appropriately. And that is a time of the S- And that is a time of the essence situation. Um, you know, the town's liable for those sorts of incidents if um, if sewer backs up and damages someone's home. Uh, we do have insurance for that, of course, but you know, those are things that you wanna try to um. Prevent, not just for the liability reason, but as a good service for the, as the town to our residents. Um, the other is our water sewer utility truck. So this is our. Uh, truck that has a utility bed on it and a crane so that we're able to um bring all our tools with us. A- approach a break, shut water down, shut sewer down, um, be able to, you know, diagnose and effectively solve any type of. Um, issues that we might have. That truck probably uh is, is, is over ten years old at this point. And is a maintenance nightmare, constantly putting money into it. Uh, both of these, you know, are gonna, these are five-year borrowings, short-term borrowings. And both of these pieces of equipment should see ten years or more. Uh, the jet are certainly way more, but the truck should at least see ten years worth of use. So again, a necessary. Um, pieces of equipment for us to uh serve the community.
And this should be funded through um the Enterprise Fund, correct?
Correct.
That service.
Yes, correct. Um, Article twenty-four and twenty-five, these are, these two articles are about um Airbnb's short-term rentals. Uh, we've talked about this uh many times here at the Board of Selectment meeting. Uh, the first Article twenty-four uh is for the town to accept the provisions of the Chapter sixty-four G. Authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax of uh six percent. So last year, the town voted to authorize a local sales, uh meals tax option. That we estimate to bring in anywhere from forty to sixty thousand dollars annually. And if we had adopted it back in two thousand and nine, we would have seen almost two to two and a half million dollars already. Um, I think we're, are in our first month of collection, which we haven't gotten a check yet, we get it at the quarter. But I looked online, I think we already, I think it was like eight thousand dollars in the month of December. And as you can imagine, our food sales, prepared food sales go up in the summer months, so that's a good sign. Uh, this is along the same lines. The benefits of this, of this tax is that it adds zero administrative burden to the town. It adds zero administrative burden to uh the homeowner that's renting their property. Uh, it gets added to the bill of whoever is renting that property through whatever service they're using. The money gets sent to the state and then the state sends us a check on the quarter, on every quarter. Um, assuming that Nahat residents are not renting other Nahat homes. This is a revenue source funded entirely by non-Nahat residents. One of, this would be our only, I think, revenue source that's of that nature. So again, as we look at our budget, trying to be, um, trying to bring in some new, new funds into the town. This is a win-win for us. The second article, Article twenty-five, would create a bylaw advisory committee. Uh, it's a five-member uh committee consisting of the building inspector, the health agent, one member of the planning board. Two Nahat citizens appointed by the town administrator. And the task would be to develop draft bylaw regulating, bylaws regulating short-term rentals pursuant to the uh s- state law sixty-four G. And to present those draft bylaws at a future town meeting for us to consider adoption. We've heard from a number of residents about uh lack of enforcement or regulation on short-term rentals in the town. Uh, so what uh this committee would do is look at other communities, what type of regulations they have. And present to us uh some recommendations for a future, for a future town meeting to adopt.
Yeah, and as, as we discussed uh yesterday, um, the board can put some temporary. Regulations in place during this, eh, you know, one year, this is essentially a one-year cycle.
I, I, I'm gonna defer to council, but my guess is yes, because in, uh, well, back in the early nineties. The Board of Selectment adopted bed and breakfast regulations. It wasn't, they weren't adopted by the town. But they were regulations of the Board of Selectment.
Well, uh, first of all, these aren't bed and breakfasts, so you know, this is a separate entity. Uh, my guess is, I was not on call at that time, my guess is those had to do with public health issues. Um, and if there are public health issues, yes, this board, as a public health board, can pass regulations um in the interim to get us to the new bylaws. So yes, but it has to be a public health issue. If, to, to, uh, not involve town meeting. But once we get the regulations drafted by this new committee, then it goes to town meeting and it sweeps right through and quickly. And we get a better hold on what's happening at these places. And more importantly, things like parking and there was a tragedy a few, a few years back. We have a better eye on what's happening.
Yeah. I guess my, my only concern was that, you know, unless there's a special town meeting, it would be a one-year cycle between, you know, when this committee's formed.
That's true, that's true. Um, but like I said, in the interim, if there are public health issues, then yes, as a public hel- a public health board, we can pass regulations to, to that effect. Absolutely.
Um, next Article number twenty-six, I'll, I'll defer, Dan, I'll let you talk a little bit about this. But this is um what I just mentioned about II. Uh, this is a wastewater bylaw amendment. Um, DEP is requiring that all communities inspect their sewer lines for infiltration like sump pumps and drain. Uh, you know, drainage from uh rooftops and other types of illicit connections into the sewer. Or cracks and breaks. Um, we've done that assessment, but part of that uh pressure from the state. Is to also have town bylaws that regulate this issue. Um, so that i- this language actually comes from the guidance of DEP. Um, essentially, it creates a bylaw that would provide the town an enforcement arm. And also uh regulate things like um. Four-to-one removal plans. Dan, do you wanna speak a little to that?
Yeah, this, this is, we, we're required to do this. This is required by the, the regulations from the state through the DEP. And as you said, Tony, what it's doing is it's, it's helping improve our sewer system, which it needs a lot of improvement. And it helps improve it through the elimination of what they call inflow and infiltration. Infiltration is like cracked pipes. Water, rainwater gets in the sewer system, it goes through the Lynn Water Sewer uh, uh, uh facility, which it shouldn't. But it does. Um, that's infiltration. Inflow is when someone will put a, a hose into their bathtub and it's raining or something like that. Well, the fact is, that overtaxes the system. It's not made for that sort of thing. So the DPE, DEP is really cracking down on getting these things under control, and that's what this is all about. With regard to the four-and-one uh elimination, what that means is if we have a large producer of wastewater, fifteen thousand gallons per day. Then they're required to produce a plan that will effectively remove four gallons of wastewater for every gallon put into the system. And this is, this is right out of this, uh, the, the, the CMR, right out of the regulations, and we're not creating this, this is just there. Uh, it'll be new to us, but the fact remains is a lot of these um ideas are already in our bylaws. We're just, we're just enforcing, we're just making them a little stronger, a little clearer. Uh, I can tell you that we're also sort of bound by the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission regulations, but they're literally thirty-plus years old. They're being renewed, but they're not ready yet. So we're just keeping in touch with the requirements of the state regulations and getting this done.
In terms of households, um, you know, households are muted for water coming in, not water going out. Um, and like you said, Dan, if people are tying their sump pumps into the wastewater system, then that's not being muted. But we're paying for it.
Mm-hmm, exactly. Um, Article twenty-seven, uh, right now I have a, it's a placeholder in here, it's a reserved pending legal review. Uh, the Coast Guard Design and Development Advisory Committee submitted a, a, an article um. Uh, based on their recommendation as a committee to be considered at this year's town meeting regarding the um. Future of the Coast Guard homes up at uh Castle and Goddard Drive. Article is with um town council and being reviewed, uh, so. And I, and honestly, I don't, not a- as a member, I'm not a member of the committee, so I don't wanna speak to uh the specifics, specifics of that at this time. But as soon as that gets reviewed at the ne- you know, the ne- the very next Board of Selectment meeting, we'll open the warrant, add it in, and close it.
Answer a question regarding this, and Dan, maybe you can answer it. Um, I understand that the town has hired engineers to go out and survey the property?
The committee, the committee, actually, yes.
Okay, with town funds, obviously, right? To subdivide it into twelve lots?
Yes.
Is it one lot now?
Correct.
Okay, um, that subdivision plan, um, has that, uh, are we planning on issuing, uh, submitting that to the planning board? Before the town meeting?
I'd have to defer to the committee.
Okay.
On that, I'm not sure.
I, I, I would, I would just think that we'd defer until after town meeting. I need decisions on how we divide or.
On whether to send it to the planning board, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I'd wait for town meeting to weigh in on that before we, we decide whether we wanna subdivide it into twelve lots or not.
Oh, right, that ma- that makes sense, right? You know, once the votes.
You don't want, you don't wanna, you don't wanna have a subdivision plan, give it to the planning board, they approve it, you put it to registry of deeds, and the town meeting votes somewhere, uh, uh, a different way.
Yeah, exactly.
And then you have to reverse the whole thing.
Right, right.
It was good that that survey was done, because they, they, they found some interesting things.
Yeah.
Um, lastly, there's a few citizen petition articles here. Uh, the first one is Lowlands Drainage. Um, uh, to see if the town in Nahat will vote to appropriate up to a hundred thousand dollars of any sum of money. To fund plans and permitting to improve drainage in the Lowlands. In order to replace, repair, construct the existing Castle Road storm drain or install new thirty-six inch diameter storm drain. Such plans and permitting will include the installation of a permanent fixed pump. It will include the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto. The next citizen petition, uh, Article twenty-nine, is Wetlands Protection Bylaw. This is to see if the town will vote to repeal in its entirety the Wetlands Protection Bylaw adapt- adopted at the August twenty-seventh. Twenty-eighteen special town meeting or take any a- action relative thereto.
That's a two-thirds vote, right, town council?
Two.
That's a two-thirds vote, isn't it?
I honestly don't know, I'll have to look into that.
The zoning law.
It wasn't, uh, no, it's wetland, so it was a simple majority to go in. I would imagine it's a simple majority to ta- to repeal.
I, I remember at that town meeting, there was a committee set up. Has, have you been meeting on that?
We, yes.
Only anirible on that committee.
The town meeting sets, uh, created the motion, the article at the last special town meeting. Uh, that was to repeal the Wetlands Bylaw. Uh, the motion, uh, was a, the article was, or the motion was amended to create a study committee. Uh, to provide, you know, I don't have the language exactly in front of me, but we've been do- we've been meeting pretty consistently. Essentially, the, the job of the committee is to provide um the facts about the Wetlands Bylaw. And be able to give the community information. Um, at the time when the bylaw was presented originally, there was a lot of confusion about what it did or didn't do. And I think that was the intent of the motion. Um, we've talked a little bit at the committee. Uh, and I need to speak with the FinCom and the moderator, but I would bu- part of that motion was that we would present those. Findings at the next town meeting. So I believe uh we would be making that presentation at the beginning. Or at some point, I would assume prior to this article, present those findings.
We, we're expecting to have uh those findings actually in the, in the warrant book. So people get it at home in advance of the town meeting.
Um, the next article is citizen petition, uh, keeping animals. Uh, it's quite long, I'm not gonna read through it. Um, and I also don't wanna. Uh, summarize it improperly, uh, but it does have to do with the amounts, the amount of animals one can keep on their property. And um setbacks for uh structures regarding those animals. And then our classic last two are continued committees and gifts.
Hey, Tony.
Yeah.
Anything else on this? Okay, I move that the Board of Selectment vote to accept and close the annual town meeting warrant as presented. And to send it to the Advisory and Finance Committee to begin taking positions. With the understanding that ongoing review will occur by the Board of Selectment and that modifications may occur at a later time.
Seconded.
Any discussions on the motions? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Town administrators report? Oh, we have one, okay, sorry.
See here?
Oh, yeah.
So the, if you want me to s- speak to this, little miss chairman. So on the agenda here, an ongoing business is a proposal from Play It As It Lies Regarding Rent Abayments. Our current uh lessee is invited to come tonight to speak to the board. Um, regarding his proposal for changes to the current structure of the lease. I don't see him here, so uh we'll reach out to him and as, we're going into executive session later tonight to discuss this as well.
Okay.
Uh, Dan, do you wanna mention anything?
No, you, that was right. We invited uh Johnny Moore and his attorney. His attorney is um in Rhode Island today and, and Johnny, I thought he was gonna be here, but I didn't see him. But I'm seeing he represented for him here, so we'll just, we'll take it up in executive session to discuss the lease for a little bit.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've, think I've spoken enough tonight. I'll skip town administrator.
Good job. Okay. I don't have a motion for this, do you? Okay.
It's Citizens Forum, right?
We're going to move into an executive session.
Do you like the Citizens Forum?
Oh, excuse me, yes, Citizens Forum. Anyone have anything to say? This is unusual.
Come on, somebody.
Richie's, Richie's sitting at home right now.
Okay, great. Um, go ahead.
Alright, so I got this, I got the, must be the third one. You know what's in here, so, oh, it's you, Mark.
It's me? Go ahead, you can do it.
Uh, you, you have to read it as active chairman.
You have to read that part.
Let's see, um, as exec- um, as executive session is necessary to protect our litigation position regarding the Northeastern University Marine Science Center. And a legal demand filed by Chris Howard. An executive session also is necessary to protect our uh negotiating position regarding the lease pertaining to One Willow Road.
I move to go into executive session to consider the lease regarding One Willow Road. To discuss our litigation position regarding Northeastern University Marine Science Center. And to discuss the legal demand fi- filed by Chris Howard. We will not be reconvening in open session.
Any discussion on this? I do, I actually have um, uh, something to say about this. Um, particularly regarding Northeastern University. Um, a- as many of you know, uh, prior to me becoming a member of the Board of Selectment. I was a member of the, uh, on the Board of Nahat Preservation Trust. Um, I resigned that position, I think in October. Um, so I resigned from the Preservation Trust. But I was also a, a plaintiff on a lawsuit against um Northeastern, the Preservation Trust was, along with twenty-eight other individuals in the town. Um, I withdrew after being elected a- as a member of the Board of Selectment. I withdrew my name from that lawsuit in Superior Court. Um, I also notified the State Ethics Commission about my position regarding this. Uh, they advised me uh to uh draft a disclosure statement regarding this subject, which I have. I filed that with the town clerk. It's on record at the town hall. If anyone wants, wants to take a look at it, it's there. So I, I just wanted to mention that um before we go into executive session. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I will call, I will call, vote.
We'll call, we'll call, right? So just say your name in the way you go.
Joshua Antrim. Aye.
My call, aye. So we will not be coming back into very good session.